And we're back with the Breakfast and Plus TV Africa Public Affairs analyst Opun Aborin Kotara joins us live via Zoom to give us his expert analysis as we go through the pages, the front pages of today's National Daily. So, Opun Aborin Kotara, good morning to you. Thank you very much for your time and happy new week.
Good morning. Good morning, Kofi. Good morning Nigerians and happy new year.
Right, it's an independence holiday. I can see you in your green and wearing what I call the Autumn Cup. I think that's a good way to celebrate Nigeria.
Well, I'm not telling the truth. It's just a coincidence. It wasn't a deliberate thing.
Okay.
I really didn't want to celebrate the past.
Maybe it's written in the stars. Alright, let's start with a look at the Punch this morning. There's some very interesting stories on the front pages today, being the first working day in the week. The Punch leads with this headline, "The PDP Crisis." What they're looking at, I almost thought that was a nation news report for a second. "PDP Crisis," it says, "Aggreaved governors meet in Enugu plot IU's removal." They have details on page two of the paper. The writers to that, "Wike, Makinde, Otom, others review Artikoo's conditions." "Wike, Makinde, Otom, others review Artikoo's conditions." "IU cannot resign until next year," Senator insists. "PDP," not "IU." "IU paid NWC members' housing allowance," according to an aide. Alright, very sad scenes, front page pictures there. You can see from Indonesia, a stadium tragedy, it was riot after a game and of course, it was a very bizarre, very sad one. "Anger as over 120 fans die in Indonesian stadium tragedy." Really sad, really sad. I wonder, you know, whether it's worth it to get into a riot because of football. Anyway, more from the paper. "3.92 trillion naira fuel subsidy topples defence, health, education budgets." "3.92 trillion naira fuel subsidy topples defence, health, education budgets." "25 million naira fine, pay punch 28-year debt, court tells AGF." Congratulations to them. "Strike: reps meet Buhari Tuesday, FG warns ASU." Reps meet Buhari Tuesday, FG warns ASU. What an irony of a headline. "Dboe plans national prayer fasting says nation troubled." Right, reminds me of one church that had its yearly theme for some years ago. It says, it said, "The church in a troubled world." Or the world, yeah, the church in a troubled world. You know, interesting. "Fans jubilate as Fina wins BB Niger 100 million naira." Some people are not happy about the money being put into entertainment. Some of them describing it as meaningless when there are other things to sponsor. That's a debate that won't end today. "Pay our salaries, doctors tackle emo on the AKT." "Pay our salaries, doctors tackle emo on the AKT." "Kwara doctor kills girlfriend, housewife buries corpses in office." Really, really sad one. You don't want to hear something like this on a Monday. "FG fines oil firms 127 billion naira for gas flaring." Right, that's some free money for them to make. Over to the Nation with these headlines. There's a nice picture of the presidential candidate of the All Progressives Congress, Shiwaji Bola Ametinu. He put out the video and a tweet. In a tweet yesterday, he was cycling, he was cycling the exercise bicycle like you're seeing there. And he says, "I'm hale and hearty," says Timpu APC candidate, "ready to serve." But you just need to go to the comment section of that tweet to really see what people are saying down there. But a big one from the Nation, "PDP Board of Trustees may ask IU to resign over crisis." I mean, the Nation is really giving a lot of attention to this. The writers to that story, "Party leaders to meet Wike in Pothakor tomorrow. Otom Ikbazu, Ugweyi, Makinde brainstorm in Enugu. Emergency neck meeting underway in Abuja." I wonder why they all have to be travelling from wherever they are to Enugu or Pothakor when you have Zoom. Can they brainstorm on Zoom? Alright. Anyway, more from the Nation, Ohaneze to Southeast. "Don't take Artikoo seriously." We'll be waiting for denial from the group. Shadaw will follow in the coming hours. "FG to federal government, rather to develop 66,661 water schemes. Minister bill, not political." Let's see how that goes. "Government abduct Quara Monak, wife drive," or driver, I think that's meant to be. And we have Fina wins BB Niger's 100 million naira prize. Congratulations to her. "Interest hike, firms face risks. 125 die in Indonesian stadium stampede." "Obey court order, government tells ASU." Obey court order. This one is quite interesting with a picture of Chris Ngueke, Minister of Labour and Employment. "Ukraine celebrates recapturing towns." Some stories on the front page of the Nation. "PFN to Nigerians, vote competence, not religion." Vote competence, not religion. Alright, over to the next paper, "Leadership on Monday." It leads with the story, "After Abuja parley with Artikoo, Makinde, Wike, Otom, Ikbazu, Ugweyi meet, weigh options." Alright, that's in Enugu. The writers to that, "Failed to reach agreement to hold more consultations after Enugu closed-door meeting." Alright, at leadership Twitter spaces, Wike's camp said it's been vindicated by 151 million naira returned PDP National Working Committee members. Okay. More from leadership, "Machina: APC's planned appeal wastes of time lawyers." "Arofi condemns lynching of two herders in Birnin Gwari." Arofi condemns lynching of two herders in Birnin Gwari. Shopun Aborin Kotara will be interested in commenting on that as well. "32.5% CRR, CBN takes out 7 trillion naira from banks vaults." I mean, there's been some debate on this. I saw some interesting debates on social media as to whether this would be healthy for the economy or not, especially for the banking system. "Crisis in CCB as commissioners accuse chairman of blocking investigations." Four journalists make national honours awards lists. And check if I'm there. And Fina wins BB Niger, related issue. Congratulations to her. Let's move over to the final paper this morning, this day, with the lead headline, "Tinabu rolls back, says he's fit and ready to serve." Tinabu rolls back, says he's fit and ready to serve. APC, PCC holds inaugural meeting this week. For first time, Buhari excludes ex-Senate President Saraki from national honours. That's a quite noticeable one by the paper this day. The writer to that nominates late Abakary in Nahoro for posthumous awards. Lawan Bajabiamila CJN, service chief, Sokonje Weyala Amina Mohammed, this day staff, music stars among 435 others. Congratulations to them. "Presidential council to facilitate state's access to $750 million World Bank facility." Hope that doesn't end up in private pockets. Final one from this day, "Strike: FG warns ASU against disobeying court order." Details on page 11. Opun Aborin Kotara, which of the headlines would you like to start things off with?
Any one. That's just for me.
Alright, alright. Anyway, we'll stick with this day. Tinabu says he's fit to serve. You know, put out a picture of video on Twitter. I think the Nation captured that on its front page as well. Can flip to that. What are your thoughts? The man says that, you know, he's heard people are already, you know, saying he's dead or people are wishing him dead, you know, and that he's ill and all that. But well, he started to disappoint them. He's hale and hurting. He was cycling on that bicycle. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, Kofi, this is just trivial attempts to debunk his health status, negative health. The story is concerning, it's negative health status, that Tinabu is medically unfit or has serious medical challenges. Maybe it's put it that way. Because when they say medically unfit, a lot of people might misinterpret it to mean legally or constitutionally he's not fit to confess. No, that's not what I mean. What the point I'm making is, he has serious medical challenges. And I believe that these are not, these are challenges that are threats to his life. I strongly believe. And honestly, I'm beginning to think that probably his desperation for power is as a result of, maybe, I said probably, as a result of what the doctors would have told him concerning his health. And so, he has resolved, we're sure, that whether the APC likes it or not, and that was why he took that threat in one of those western states, when they talked about Buhari, that Buhari feels that is bad for him, but... ...to become president. So, I have this belief, I have this conviction, that probably the doctors were supposed to say something to me, you know, concerning his lifespan. And that was have been part of his desperation. Because the man is sick. When they say sick, we're not saying malaria, because people come up to say everybody false sick. Of course, everybody false sick. But the man who has malaria cannot be compared to the man who has cancer. I'm using this hypothetically. The man who has malaria, I'm not saying he has cancer, cannot be compared to a man who has cancer. The man who has malaria is sick. But definitely not as serious as the man who has cancer, unless you have this malaria that gets into the debate. But you understand what I'm trying to say. So, Tinabu is really, really sick. What they are doing is just to give Nigeria the impression and it's awakening to reminiscence of what happened with Diarra. When they said Diarra was sick, and what did the passing do? They now, the studio broke up a video of Diarra playing squat. Eventually, what happened? Buhari's own case, even the issue of Buhari's illness was not even contemporized as much as that of Tinabu right now. But we can see what we are suffering. Buhari is constantly on a long surgeon, constantly. He's either on one medical trip or he's outside the country for one reason or the other. Now again, even when he's going on a medical trip, they use foreign visits, international visits and so on as an excuse to cover up for his trip to London. It happened recently, just this year. So, the fact that Tinabu is sick is irrelevant, my dear brother. If they like, they can come up with all kinds of pictures, they can come up with all kinds of videos. How long? If he said he's fit, let him cycle on the video for at least one hour.
Opun Aborin Kotara, is that not too harsh? You want him to cycle for one hour? I mean, he's, you know, his age, 70 years.
Okay, if you have to 70.
Oh, it gets, I have a number of numbers in my head. Sorry, I don't want to say the wrong thing.
Okay, 70, okay. I thought it's about 50. Let's leave that, my dear brother.
I need to check. It gets a bit confusing. But I mean...
Yes, not 70, but 50, probably 50.
But at his age, I mean, you didn't see the video, he looks okay. He was cycling normally. If you're not well, you might not be able to cycle like that.
Because if you remove, because if you remove a cripple and keep him in a chair, from the wheelchair, keep him in a chair, with a cripple in a, but how will you know if he's a cripple or not?
But, 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 Opun Aborin Kotara, you were...
Let him circle for 30, 40 minutes. Let him circle. How can you, if you want to ride a bicycle, I'm going to ride a bicycle for 10 minutes. No, Kofi, let's just say now, are you going to ride a bike for 10 minutes? If you have to ride a bike, the minimum is one hour, because you have to go around, you have to go around in circles or something. Because if you have to bike, exercise, you can't go bike for 10 minutes, you can't bike for 15 minutes. Let's just say that.
But, but I mean, you were...
And it simply means that...
Yeah, yeah. I mean, this is a man who was at the APC presidential rally. Even when the president left Tavenu to go home to refresh and rest, he was there from the night...
You mean the rally? Are you talking about the convention?
Sorry, the convention, the primary, the primary. Tinabu was there from night, the night, if not from the day, into the night, into the morning, to the next day where he gave his acceptance speech. He was there, didn't go home.
And we all saw, we all saw when he mounted the lectern to make the speech, we saw how he moved from the BIT stand to the lectern. You saw it. We all saw how he was hunched by getting over there, including Abdekan Gabiray and Co. We all saw it. So, what are you saying? To sit down there, it doesn't take anything. And don't forget, it is very possible for a man that is very, doesn't worry sit down. At this Buhari zone now is known. Doesn't worry sit for meetings for hours. At this Buhari zone, you know, Diarra does sit. You see, if you're sick, you're sick. If you're not sick, you're not sick. No matter how you deny it, there are things you cannot hide. Like my late dad will always say, "You're trying to hide sickness, very sickness will eventually expose you." Because it's like pregnancy. I'm not pregnant, I'm not pregnant. It's a matter of time. It's a matter of time. Definitely Tinabu has the money that will guide, purchase the drugs that will make him look fit. But you see, nature is nature. And that's why I wanted the wisest things to expose. Nature is nature. He has the money. Okay, what has happened to the inauguration of the PCC? Such an important occasion, function. What has happened to it? Is that for the country, our medical ground? Is that what we are going to face? It don't get to live in the worst than Buhari's case. That's the truth. From what we see now, Shetima will be the de facto president of the country. This is going to be the de facto...
I mean, yeah, so are you not okay with that fact? I mean, if Shetima will be the de facto president of the country, at least, he is...
If we can, if we can step off that, if we can, no, Kofi, depend on Nigeria. There's no problem if, for example, now he gets into office and something happens. Because, I mean, you cannot control your tomorrow. You can only pray for or against your tomorrow. You can't control it. So, if he gets into office and something happens and Shetima, by virtue of constitutional provisions, takes over, steps it. That's the difference in altogether. You see? But then you cannot say you want to because you have a Shetima that can fill in the gap. Therefore, you can elect somebody that is medically unfit. Why do you think the constitution is also concerned about your medical fitness? You see, the force charge at the table, even in Shetima, because the de facto president, his powers are limited, they are circumscribed. Let us realise that. And you are going to have a Tinabu that will now be controlled by cronies again, just like what you have under the Buhari's administration. Where even appointments are made into NNTC, which tells Mr. President in premature, I'm not even telling him of the premature, no late. You can remember what the left, the chief of staff did because of his closeness to Buhari. And today, he's been honored posthumously. For what? And even that issue of posthumous honor is even contrary, goes contrary to the provisions of the act. You're not honored, you can't honor people posthumously. I mean, this is national honor. And now, Gbogbo Jonagha refused to honor this lady who died, this medical doctor, this Ebola medical doctor who died...
A dead devil, a dead devil.
...within Ebola. Yes, that was a good one. They refused to honor, just by the pressure. Just by the pressure. But look at what he's done. So, net of this thing, and now he has refused to honor, is it the former senior president?
Yes, yes.
So, on one ground. But you are honoring Tunde, who's your nephew. What has Tunde done for Nigeria that you've got to honor him? What has he done? This is most corrupt government. Corruption is not all about finance. Necessity is corrupt. Euthanasia is corrupt. So, what has he done? What has Tunde done that you have to honor Tunde? What has he done? And you don't want to honor Saraki, a former congressman, a former governor, a former senior president. You don't want to honor him. What kind of a constitution? You are honoring the Abayas. Oh my God. What kind of a constitution?
Alright.
This is...
Alright.
Yeah, I'm not going to do my...
Yeah, that's interesting, Opun Aborin. But let's move on to the next one. The People's Democratic Party seems to still not know where it's headed. We hear that Wike and Artikoo met in Abuja. Some sort of offer was made to Wike. The word in the street is that the offer is to support...
The danger is absolutely, 2027.
Yeah. So, I mean, now the governors who are on the Wike side of the party met in, of course, the paper said, this is the leadership met in Enugu to weigh out the options. They've not reached an agreement. What are your thoughts on the current state of affairs in the PDNP?
Well, I don't have, Kofi. I just see this five governors laundering the morass of issues. You know, thinking that they can influence the exit of IU is acting to back in on the sticky weekend. It's a full-on hope. There is nothing. You know, when they said these people returned money, refunded their money, well, in a smartass, it's a nobility in the PD. It has never happened. But it can be an innovation. It can be. And secondly, if it is approved, although that is still contentious, but if it is approved by, is it the neck of the party? I'm talking about the controversial house in Alaa. If it is approved, then the truth about it is that IU can be absorbed unless it is done correctly on its own without the approval of the approving authorities or body or whatever. I don't mean the neck on WCC or whatever. Now, the point I'm trying to make, my dear, you are refunding these monies, weeks after, about a week or two weeks after it was paid into your account. Once the monies are paid into your account or withdrawn, you're going to Alaa. Why didn't you raise this issue until one or two weeks after? What does that tell you? It was well orchestrated by a microscopic team. These characters are acting on the orders of these governors. Let us call it state, state. The likes of Dan Abia and Co., you all know their inclination, where they are. We all know that they are for Wike, Makinde, Otom and so on. And they will stop at nothing to rubbish, to cast a slur on the passion of IU. And that is what they are doing. I am not trying to justify. Like I said, I said, if it is approved by the authority that ought to approve, the body that ought to approve. If it is not, and IU on his own did it, well, there are disciplinary measures. That does not in any way justify if it was done illegally. But even if it was done illegally, there are disciplinary measures and not to remove IU at this point in time. It's going to cause more crisis in the party. The presidential conference has started. How can you now change your national chairman? And even if you change your national, you know, who comes to equity must come with clean hands. You don't approbat and reprobate. Now, if you remove the national chairman and your argument is ostensibly flagged on the issue of equity fairness and justice, in other words, where the national chairman must come from, if that is your argument, and you remove the national chairman, the man that will take his place, that will step in, is definitely somebody still from that zone. Now, you're saying, "Precipities, you have to pick your constitution so that it goes to the south." Who the hell are you to dictate to the party? So, are you saying the constitution should be reviewed because of just four, five persons? When did the founding fathers did not influence such a review? I mean, it is rationally inexplicable for you to come and tell me that they have to review the constitution in the interest of inclusiveness. IU was elected, elected, not appointed. Artikoo was elected, not appointed. When you knew that IU was the national chairman from the north, why did you elect Artikoo? This means, the presumption there is that the issue of where somebody comes from is immaterial. What is paramount, what is eminent is bigger than before. That is the presumption. And so, we don't care whether IU is from the north and the presidential candidate is from the north. Otherwise, you would have said IU is from the north. Therefore, we are not going to elect somebody from the, from the, from the north as well. Whatever this manship that went on that day is politics. Whatever this man, it cannot even be criticized for any reason. It's politics. Because politics is all about interest. It's all about interest articulated in.
Alright.
It's a conservative circle of conspiracies. So, you don't blame anybody when it comes to politics. Whatever you do, provided it is legitimate and legal, you cannot blame anybody. Because that's what politics is all about. If one man has smacked you, if a man has smacked you, he has outsmarted you. You go back and do your homework.
Alright, Opun Aborin Kotara.
In synopsis, what I'm saying in synopsis, Kofi, is this. They are wasting their time. IU will not go. And let me tell you the truth. This issue of 2027, that is going to, that is a deep, fat lie. Wike should know that his actions are gradually leading him to political nadir. That is the truth about.
Interesting. We'll go over to the final one, which is on the front page of the Nation. Interesting one. It just dovetails into one of our top trending stories this morning. On the ASU strike, "Obey court order, FG or federal government tells ASU." I think this comes after, probably after Ngueke walked out of the negotiations, the meeting there at the House of Representatives. But this is what the paper says. "The federal government yesterday advised the academic staff union of universities to obey national industrial court ruling that ordered striking lectures to return to work. Minister of Labour and Employment Senator Chris Ngueke said a new directive by ASU exhorting its members to continue the strike was lawlessness. He added, quote, "That the federal government strongly frowns at this." He released a statement in Abuja, it was released by his Deputy Director Press and Publications, you know, where the minister accused ASU's leadership of misinforming and misleading its members. It seems it's all confusing, Opun Aborin, with what is happening as far as the federal government's stance is concerned. Because on one side, we see the House of Representatives negotiations, the minister walks out. On one side, we see the Minister of Education forming a committee, a 14-man committee, to look into the recommendations of another committee led by Professor Nimitri. And then in all of this, while they're trying to see how to get this sorted out, the minister is issuing, is taking ASU to court. And then now, after the meeting where he walked out, issues a statement saying they should obey the court order. So, is this government really, really, are they sincere about ending this strike, in your opinion?
You see, what the government is implying is what I refer to as the Fabian policy. You know, Kofi, not the Fabian policy. I mean, you just keep doing things to tire out the opposition. That's exactly what it is.
Yeah.
First and foremost, first and foremost, there cannot be crueler tyranny than that perpetrated under the shoes of the law. You dish the agreements reached with ASU. ASU is saying, "No, you must honor our people." It's an agreement signed by Mr. President. He reviewed the agreement. You must honor. Rather than honor, you run to courts, praying with God to compel ASU to go back to work. In other words, to hell with the agreement we have. I will bring my pewsers to bear. You must walk willingly. I will not reach that attitude. ASU will be the greatest soon to go back to work. Content? Okay. No, they don't. No, they don't. Arrest them. I think it's content. Go on, arrest. That will be a pre-studious verdict. A pre-studious verdict. That will be a reciprocal foundness. A reciprocal foundness. If the God should do that.
Alright, Opuna Bokutara, we have, we have to leave it at that. Uh, uh, wh- what's the term we used again to describe what the federal government is doing?
Fabian police.
Alright, alright.
Employ the Fabian police, a stalking horse.
Yeah, interesting. Uh, Opuna Bokutara, thank you so much. It's, uh, been a very interesting session with you and we look forward to having you again with us next week.
Thank you.
Alright, enjoy your holidays.
Same to you.
And that's, thank you very much. That is the size of our package for Off the Press. Uh, we'll take a break now to just give you a bit of a taste of what happened today in history. When we return, our first major conversation. Please stay with us.